Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
I would ask that as we are. Alright, so as a quick reminder, budget workshops are an opportunity for council to discuss. And traditionally, we've not taken formal action. We've taken it back to council meetings. And in particular, if we've got four people, that would make sense to say, alright, we'll bring our notes back to the big group. And at the next council meeting, have discussions about any potential recommendations for changes to the budget. And I'm asking the four people in council who are present, is that our understanding, are we all comfortable with that?
I am.
Yes.
Yes, we've, we've never closed the door on any of our department heads in any of these meetings. So we can always come back and revisit something if, if the need arises.
Absolutely. So to get us rolling. There's a couple of reminders that I wanted to provide for everybody. And talking about meetings in general, and part of this is because I've had some questions that I've been asked directly. And I've had a couple of people from council that have said that they've had some similar questions. So as a reminder for council, for the public, we are recording this, and if we can, we're going to do the best. Not if we can, but I believe we will be putting this out so that if people want to hear the record in terms of what we discussed this evening, the recording will be there. But similar to executive sessions, we don't make decisions in executive sessions. Workshop is similar to executive sessions in that respect. During council meetings, when we have executive sessions, they are for typically personnel-related matters. So contract negotiations and some other issues that we may be having that we need to make sure that we are keeping things that need to be, things that are sensitive, keeping them under wraps. And we've done, I think, a good job of some executive session sharing information with the council. That's been important because I want to make sure that council's up to date with what's going on. I've got.
Take care. I'll see you.
I just muted Mac. I was a little bit loud. So what we've done with our executive sessions is we've kept council up to date in terms of what's being discussed. We've talked about different issues. And one of the things that I've been proud of over the last 10 years, not just the last couple of years, is the fact that we have successfully negotiated with our labor unions consistently. And we've been consistent in terms of what we've done with one group to the next. And really, there's only been one time where we've not been able to come to an agreement with, with the negotiating unit. And at one time, we went to binding arbitration. And at the end of the day, that one group got 0.1% higher than what the city had offered. So what I thought was a very fair and balanced offer well, ended up pretty much being what the arbitrator determined. In terms of city budget and priorities, the importance of these workshops, well, we are not just saying, here's where we're going to spend our money. The budget is an opportunity to say where we're putting our money is where our priorities are. And over the last couple of years, if you take a look around the city, you can see a major investment in terms of our parks, in terms of our forward-facing facilities. And we've done some important things with regard to infrastructure. I think Mac was talking about the Clinton project being $18 million. And it's a major investment, not just in the pavement, but the things that are happening underneath. And we've got major projects happening down on Owigo. We've got streets such as Wheeler and Elm that are major thoroughfares that are being repaved. And we've done some pretty significant work also up and up on the hill near the high school when there was flooding that, well, wasn't caused by the city. But we're able to mitigate at least one of the residents that was having significant issues and improve things so that major storms, and I think today will be a true test, the major storms were not completely drenching at least one person's basement. We've also done a lot of work all the way from Otter Creek, all the way from the waterworks to the Tiafana Yoga. Or I believe it's six out of eight of the bridges and culverts that have been widened to allow for higher volume of water to pass through. And also, there was some work done in the waterworks to potentially slow the flow of water. And again, time like this, try to slow the flow of water because we were seeing significant issues when you get over to Lincoln, Maple, Madison, and the other blocks over there. So we've taken a lot of steps, made some significant investments in terms of the infrastructure. And as we're heading into an election in the next week or so, I know that there's a lot of discussion about, well, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. But quite frankly, we've prioritized, we've put the people's needs first. And council, I'm very pleased with your efforts in terms of supporting what we've put forward in budgets to make sure that we're keeping our priorities in order. So moving forward for this evening in terms of budget discussion. I'm going to kick things off. There's a couple of things in terms of the city budget from the administrative standpoint. I'd like to get us started and then give the opportunity for our public safety heads, the police chief and the fire chief, to discuss their proposed budgets and their asks, and then we'll take it from there. One of the things I want to accentuate and stress with council, rescue plan funding, there's some items in there that are tied in in terms of our annual budget. And if we're not going to work forward with both the rescue plan funding and the budget at the same time, then we could have some potential issues. So my hope is that November 16, we'll be able to sit down, finalize rescue plan funding, and still have some time in terms of the budget. But that's something that we're going to need to continue to move forward on. From my desk, one of the things that I did was I increased the potential salary for council for the mayor. And I think that it is past the time for us to have another bump in terms of what we are looking for for our public servants. And when I compare us to some of the other local electeds, you know, the town of Cortlandville and what they pay for town supervisor and their board members. When you look at what county legislators make, we are well below what we're seeing. And with the time and attention that is required over time, I think a small increase is appropriate. We are budgeting for a full-time secretary in the mayor's office. That's a change from where we've been in the past. I've been fortunate that we've had somebody who's served above and beyond. I had a full-time position and was doing some additional work. And there were some things that I took on, and quite frankly, I don't want to put somebody else in a position where they may need to be taking on more work than what they're ready for. So I want to make sure that they are staffed appropriately. But in terms of staffing, you know, for the most part, we are fairly consistent with where we've been in years past. And there's been a lot of change over the last couple of months, as some people have moved from one position to another within the city. But we've continued to maintain a strong presence, and we've been able to continue to serve the public effectively. Even with the challenges that we've experienced over the last year and a half, almost two years now. Any questions about administratively the budget? Talk about city council, mayors. We also have Rick on, he talks about law. And it might be a good opportunity if we want to get into the revenue side or any other questions for Mac, who's the director of administration and finance.
Well, I'd rather, before we cover myself, as far as I'm concerned, council's budget and the mayor's budget, I'd rather go over what department heads we have here first, so they can get done. Afterwards, there's, you know, I have some questions on the common council with that, so. But I'd rather wait and go over the safety departments first, and then we'll get into our budget. Who else? We had to wait to talk to them too. What's that, Rick?
No, no, let me go first.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I mean, I, I don't have any question about the personnel services line. It's generally just me. The, the only concern I have, and I think the most likeliness, that likelihood that, that it will have to change is the professional services line. That line covers both my paralegal and the, the experts that we have to hire for extra legal help, the private investigator that we use for some of the zoning issues. And of, you know, appraisals or surveys or things that come up during the year. And we never know when there might be a lawsuit about whatever that's going to require some extra effort. So I think that I don't, I don't object to it being this budget, but I think there's needs to be a like or an understanding that that is likely to change over the course of the year as circumstances change and present itself. So that's the only part of my budget that I think is soft. I don't know that there's anything that need to do with it because it's an unknown. I think Mac is absolutely on point with it relative to the budget process for this year. But the expectation should be that it may change as we go through the year and uncover things that we can't possibly anticipate right this minute. But everything else is right on point.
Alright, any questions for Rick?
No, I guess we can always adjust as we've done in the past.
Right.
If needed, so.
We just adjusted a little while ago, right, Rick? A little while ago, you, you came up to us.
We have. Yeah, we've had some unexpected lawsuits this past year. And I mean, it's going to be different next year. We won't have any typically adversarial union negotiations in the next year. So we don't, I don't anticipate too much issues. I think we probably resolve most everything. We've had some good luck this year with three unions, and we haven't had to reach out to outside council. This year, we've had some extraordinary zoning issues that have resulted in litigation that has been very expensive. But, but the, the union stuff has been generally handled in-house, which I'm kind of proud of, and able to keep it intact up to this particular point. I think we're in a good place with, we've settled two of the three that we have. And I think we're in a positive place relative to the final one, PBA. And we have a little work to do, but I think it's just going in the right directions that we won't need to go to arbitration. So I'm knocking on wood as I speak, but I think that's where we're at. But the zoning stuff and, you know, it's never personal injuries. We have insurance for that. That doesn't come out of anybody's budget. But some of the union stuff always does. Grievances come up as, that we can't anticipate. So, you know, that's where we're at.
Alright, any other questions for Rick? If not, we're going to move on to Paul Sandy, police chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I don't know if you want to ask me questions about the budget, or you want to just hear the synopsis like Rick.
I want to hear you talk, Paul.
There was a time you didn't like that bill.
I know, I know. I'm ready for it though. I have missed it.
Alright, um. The budget, um. As I've last seen it, I can live with. There are a couple of things out of place. Like 5411 utilities normally isn't something that I have down there. And it's there, and it's scheduled for 3,000. That should be moved down to the 541401, the armory impound is typically 3,000. I don't know where that mistake came up. And then that 24,000, which is typically, which is listed under the armory, should go down to the 5415 professional rental, which is 24,000. That's where we do our contracts and maintenance and stuff. So those, the 3,000 and the 24 need to be shifted down to be put in place. That utilities is something that, you know, I don't budget for. It comes out of a different area. I do note that, and, and this has been ongoing, the 52,000 and the 520600 for motor equipment for vehicles and operating equipment greater than 5,000. The one was scheduled for 20,000. The other was budgeted for 103,000. So I understand that the vehicles and that equipment was taken out of the budget because it's supposed to be coming out of the recovery money from the rescue money. Which, if it comes from there, I'm fine, you know. Either way, I need that equipment. This department has been going without vehicles. We've been cut from years ago, we used to get three, we cut back to two, and we did that on our own when we went to Tahoe's because they're more expensive. And we were getting two a year. And we had a nice rotation. Vehicles were kept pretty much on warranty for major repairs, and we could sell them, you know, before we got into a lot of money. We were cut to one vehicle over the past few years, and it has taken a toll. If you note, last common council meeting, that was the second time we had to add $5,000 to the maintenance line just to keep the cars going. I mean, so that's $10,000 that we've added to that budget line to keep these vehicles going. In 2021, due to a couple of reasons, we weren't even able to order a car. So we went without. These cars are taking a toll. They're not, they're not used like every other car. Most cars aren't run 24/7. You know, high speed, low speed, high speed, low speed, braking and stuff. It takes a toll on them. So I do need those vehicles if, if they're going to stay in the recovery money, I'm okay with that. But that's something you have to decide on. If you decide to cut it out of the recovery money, it's got to go back in the budget. I can't do without them.
Okay, chief. Yep. In this budget, there are no cars in it? I mean, I know there's cars, the last I looked in the recovery money, I can't remember if it was three or what. So in, in your operating equipment, you don't have any cars listed in there?
I did. They were taken out and put into the recovery money.
So, yeah, I saw that too. Chief, how many, how many cars is that 123 that you requested? How many cars is that?
I can probably get two out of that with the needed equipment, new cameras and stuff. The mayor and I had talked a while ago about trying to catch us up an extra one. I think that's why there was 160 put in the recovery fund to try to catch us up from being behind for so long.
There's actually 180 in the recovery fund for three vehicles, Paul.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I just pulled up the numbers from, and I, I do think slash hope we are planning to vote on the recovery funds at the next meeting. So hopefully that'll be settled in time to finalize the budget. But yeah, I see 180 budgeted for three vehicles in that. And I don't think anyone in council has had any issues with that, that I've heard anyway.
I just got something sent to me today. I believe it was today, that has reduced that number. It's no longer 160, I believe it's 123. And it was just in front of me. I think that's been reduced according to a document I just got.
That document is just a draft, Paul. Just a draft, and it's clearly marked, just a draft.
Okay, okay.
It's an alternative if in fact the relief money doesn't come through.
Okay, okay. So if you're telling me the money's still there, is, is budgeted, I'm okay with that. So overall, our budget would be okay. I do want to address one thing. And the mayor said this would be the appropriate venue to do this. Our staffing has been pretty much stagnant. The number, the size of this department for decades. And we have gone up a couple. We've gone up an SRO, and we've gone up a a training officer. They're not boots on the ground, they're not outside. Cortland PD is facing the same effects that police departments across the country, particularly in New York State are facing. Everybody's short. Nobody has police officers. The hiring list is, is dismal. People don't want to be police officers. Senior police officers are retiring. We operated 2020 in a deficit of officers. 2021, we've operated with eight vacancies. We've been backfilling eight vacancies all year long. We were able to hire four to send to academy in April. They are just returning on FTO. They won't be on their own until December. Okay? So we've been paying for those four in academy, and we've been backfilling their spots plus another four that are empty. In 2020, we spent 100 and 2020, we spent 179,000, I believe it was. 179,000 in just short shift overtime. That was in 2020. And we weren't as bad as we were this year. This year, as of September 15th, we spent 133,000 in just short shift overtime. That's overtime to backfill these shifts. And what that has caused is we are forcing people to work. People are working 16-hour shifts. Many of them don't want to be working 16-hour shifts, but we have to put out a minimum staffing per contract. So even with the return of four, we breathe a sigh of relief that, okay, now we're going to have these filled in December, and we'll be down four officers. We, we can manage, you know. October 14th, we lost a two-and-a-half-year officer. He went back to Manlius. So that puts us at five below. This past Sunday, October 24th, we lost an office 20-year veteran to retirement. We're, we're back to six and a whole. I know in January, I anticipate a retirement of a senior officer. And, and in March, the retirement of another one, we'll be back to eight and a whole. Which is costing us a lot of money, and it's costing a lot of duress on our people. We've tried to recruit laterals. That's not successful, you know, partially due to pay, partially due to schedule. We're, we're addressing the schedule. And hopefully that'll, that'll draw somebody, but you know, the pay and so forth. But there's just not the attraction here to draw lateral. So we've already been looking at, we've got spots booked for the academies. What I'm going to ask is that I'd like to see three more people added to our roster. We've done the numbers, we run them through Mac and all, and I think Mac came up with 160,000 for three new officers being added to our police department. I know it sounds like a lot of money and but what I want to tell you is historically, you know, it's not new for this department to be down. I've been doing some of the the numbers for participation with longevity with negotiations. And here's what I, you know, what we see. We have 10 officers right now with less than four years on. That's 10 officers. One, one has just left. We had 11. We have three officers with 13 years on. We have three with 14 years on. We have three with 15 years on. We have two with 16, four with 17, three with 18, two with 21, and then it's one above that for most years. What that is telling us is that it's not uncommon for us to go down two or three officers in a year. If we keep that kind of decrease on an annual basis, these three extra officers would just offer us a cushion because it takes an off. It, it typically takes a year from hire to putting that officer on the road before he's any good to us. So if by adding three, it's not like we're going to be totally flush and we'll be three over our, our budget because we typically are never flush. You know, we're a small department. We don't pay what other departments pay. We don't offer opportunities that other departments. So we do lose some people to retirement, and we lose people to lateral transfers. What this three extra people would do is basically give us a cushion so we can get people into academy. So when we start losing one, two, three here and there, we're not paying, we're not backfilling positions, you know, to the tune of 180, 190,000 dollars a year. Like I said, right now, we're at 133,000, and that was as of September 15th. So I mean, I anticipate us being up about 150, 160,000 anyway with short shift, just short shift overtime. You know, we, we have an increase. Billy, Billy knows this has been a situation we've dealt with for years. The union has always tried to put more boots on the ground. I am trying to take our desk officer, and I've talked to the mayor and so forth about this, is trying to move him off of the desk and get him out onto the road. So we have another officer out there. Call activity is busy out there. Our officers are busy. The calls are getting more complex. There are getting to be multiple officer calls. We had the death of a young child the other day, eight years old, that, that took most of our resources. We had two detectives, two patrols down there. We ended up having two state troopers and two deputy sheriffs in town during a day shift answering calls for us. Because we can't keep up with the call activity. Is it like that every day? Not always. But when it hits and you don't have people answering the calls, and you have people working 16-hour shifts, it's not a good work environment. And, and my fear is if we don't do something, we're going to end up in such a hole, we're not going to dig our way out.
Well, what about the sick time? A lot of guys abusing sick time as a result of it? Do you see a lot of sick time usage?
No. We do if they can't get the day off. I mean, most of the shifts were at least two people down. So time off became a tough thing to get. The use of personal time and the use of sick time has hurt us because it's usually coming when we can't afford to have those people gone and requires more forces. I'm hoping with change, we are looking at changing the schedule. I'm hoping with that change that attitudes and will be, will be better and people won't be as likely to do that. Because they'll be working permanent shifts with permanent days off.
You guys got to understand, when it comes to law enforcement, if you're working 16-hour tours and 12-hour tours, that's the increase of injuries. You're out there, you're out, you're basically tired, and you're out there and you're working doubles, and it gets overwhelming and eventually liability-wise, you make mistakes, officers get hurt, and that's where the lack of manpower hurts a, a department.
So I have, I have two questions, chief. The first one is even if we agreed to, to do this, to add these officers to try to keep you whole, you're talking about a year out. So my first question is, we have to do something now based on what you're saying to us. So I, I wonder what our strategy is short-term. And then long-term, how are, how are we advertising these positions? I mean, are we reaching out to TC3 and other community colleges and the college here on the hill? And we talked about that. And we talked about that this summer when we were writing up the uh. The executive order two or three reforms, we talked about how to try to reach out to more people, is is that any of that? Taken, taken hold, have we done any of that, reached out to how, I guess, how how are we letting people know we have openings in the for the long term and the short term? What are we gonna do now if you're having all these issues? Because even if you get these officers, they're not gonna be ready to do what you want them to do for what, six months to a year?
We have done, and and we did a ton of advertising over the summer for our for our openings, trying to get laterals. We're on electronic billboards in about five different communities. We're also advertising on social media. Like I said, the problem is our entry pay, even though we agreed that they come in at. Their years of service, say we attract somebody with five years of experience, they would come in at that pay rate. It's still below what a lot of agencies are paying. So we were doing that, we did recruitment, we held three recruitment sessions for the for the September civil service exam. We got about ten participants in each one, we taught them how to take, sign up for the exam. We taught them how to take the exam, we gave them practice exams, we taught them what was required with the Cooper standards for the PT. That, you know, based on your age and 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 your gender and so forth, you had to do so many push-ups, so many sit-ups and you had to run a mile and a half in a certain time period. We taught them all that. When it came time for the exam, thirty-three people signed up for the exam, thirty-three. We used to have two hundred. That would take this exam. Over the past couple of years, it has dwindled. Twenty twenty took a toll on people wanting to be a police officer. So here's how it gets even worse. Thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three that took the exam, two didn't respond afterwards. Thirty-one were supposed to take the physical agility test, twenty-one showed up. Twenty-one showed up. Out of that twenty-one, eleven passed. All right, now we have to hope that those eleven pass the written exam. They just did a retest then Saturday, the twenty-third. Out of the, out of the ten that were supposed to come back for a retest. Only a handful did and only three passed, so right now, there's, there's fourteen people that have. Passed the agility and we're praying that they pass the written exam. We have talked to civil service, they are hoping to have us the results of this exam by Thanksgiving time. That'll give us a month to to hire fast and hard. The county only has one opening. Homer has none, so we would have the list. I had Lieutenant Q contact all the different agencies that would be hosting an academy. We found Southern Tier in Corning is hosting an academy in January. Which is, which is unusual to have an academy in January. We have secured four spots. I said, get four spots. We have an academy in. March in Broom County. I said, secure four spots. I said, you know, because we anticipate two more leaving. I said, let's book our spots now, we will hire fast and hard off in this place. We have also started an aggressive campaign with civil service in Albany about having another exam this spring. Because we are fearful of expiring this list before we can get qualified candidates. I've talked to SUNY Cortland, they have two hundred graduating seniors that just cover. Criminology, psychology and sociology. Those are the three degree programs I asked about. There's two hundred graduating seniors that'll be here to graduate in May looking for jobs. And those are in fields that are typically drawn towards law enforcement. So if we could have an exam in the spring, we can do heavy recruiting on these individuals. To get them to sign up and take the exam. And they would be here for it. The problem is, when you recruit SUNY, typically when the exam is in September. You have to sign up in July. They're not here and they're not coming back to sign up for it. They'll take tests down, down in Suffolk County, Nassau County, New York City, you know, places they're from. They're not gonna come up here and sign up for ours. So if we can host it. Where they're right here, we can recruit heavily on TC three and SUNY. Get them to sign up for our exam, take the exam and hopefully have the list back by graduation. To where we can say, you've lived here for four years, you know, it's it's an athletic university. These people are in good shape, we're not gonna have people failing the PT. You know, they're they're college educated, we're not gonna have them failing the exam. That opens a a whole new pool for us, right there, two hundred people maybe. You know, if we got fifty of them, if we got twenty-five percent, we would be elated. So we are taking these steps. The problem is, is civil service is somewhat of a roadblock. They're not just saying, oh, you can do it. I've written a a two-page letter, the sheriff's written a two-page letter. Bob Pittman from Homer has written a letter. I believe Mark Helms, the sheriff, is trying to get the county attorney on board. I've spoken to the mayor about a letter. I'm even thinking about approaching Eric Bitterbaum from SUNY about writing a letter about how good this opportunity would be for. His graduating seniors and 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 fulfilling their dreams of of getting a job in this field. So so we are taking our steps. We've looked at, we we've discussed part-timers, part-timers. Number one, you have to find people, you have to train them in in what we're doing and our policies and procedures, you have to outfit them. So there's a, there's a huge cost and there's a, there's a, there's a time lag in that as well. As far as the academy in in January, that's a shorter academy. Broom County is a long academy, it gives far above what DCJS recommendations are or requirements are. The one in Corning meets all the requirements, our people would be back in May. They'd start in January, they'd be back in May, they could FTO, they'd be on the road by summer. So if we can get six into that academy. That would be wonders. If we could get four into that academy, that would do wonders. And then if we got four into the other one. But I'm trying to get ahead of this curve of where we're constantly losing people and getting behind the eight ball. To where now we are constantly running to catch up. If we had the three extra bodies, chances are we will never be that many ahead. Typically, we have nine per shift, okay? That's twenty-seven patrols, if we went up to thirty, thirty patrols, we're probably never oh, gonna be thirty on the books. You know, there might be, there might be a spot for thirty, but you know, we're probably gonna be one or two down. I know as we look at this, as I look at my numbers. Like I said, I have. Four with seventeen years on, three with eighteen years on, two with twenty-one, one with twenty-two, one with twenty-four. One with twenty-six, two with twenty-eight, one with thirty-two and one with thirty-six. We have a number of people, come January, they could say, I'm out of here, I've had enough of this. And we are gonna be in a serious hurt, so I'm trying to prepare for the future to where we can at least have a few ahead. We have to keep the ten that we have the new ones and we have to try to retain some of the older ones.
So you have gone to TC three as well and asked them, you know, here are the the degrees, traditionally people. Are gravitate, if they have these degrees, they traditionally gravitate towards the police force, police department. Have you done the same thing with TC three to get a handle on how many of their graduates are gonna have this spring and similar, only two-year degrees instead of four-year degrees?
I didn't, I didn't talk to um TC three yet. That's something, I talked to Scott Oaks a while ago, I used to teach, I was an adjunct over there. A lot of those don't come our way. We have never hired, we've hired them in the past, but in recent years, we haven't hired anybody from TC three, they haven't been looking at us.
It's a different world over there, so I I encourage you to, you know, do, try the same strategy that you did with SUNY Cortland.
Oh, exactly. I mean, we're not opposed to that and we will definitely do it, but we're under a time constraint to try to get this ball rolling. And SUNY's numbers are by far larger than TC three, so if we can grab them right there. Couple of them that we did hire from TC three didn't handle the academy and they and they filled out.
And I would, I would, if you haven't already, I'd put a call into Seth Thompson over TC three too as well. Because he might be able to help you with with some of that as well. So just out of curiosity, what communities did we have billboards in?
I don't know them all because Lieutenant and Deputy Chief Guerrero arranged it, but I know there was one right on Tompkins Street. And that individual has them in multiple communities and we thought initially it was just us, you know, on the Tompkins Street. And I've been told he put them on all of his and they will post for so long and come down and post for so long and come down.
All right, so I can see, just listening to you and I'm making some notes here, so but I'm paying attention. You're definitely putting forth some strategies for the long term of how to try to get out ahead of this. You know, in terms of what you're trying to do with the civil service exam in January and and I encourage, yeah. I I would encourage you to, if you haven't already, reach out to our state senator and and state assembly person as well and get them behind that effort. If you haven't already done that, you probably have, you're thinking ahead. So I see that, but it comes back to the other question, chief, is that even if these things. All come together, we're still talking about several months out. And I heard two concerns, I heard the concern about the long term and I heard a concern about what are we gonna do now? And and what are we gonna do now? Do, I mean, Bill makes a good point. You can't continually work twelve-hour shifts for days and days and days, you know, you can't continually work sixteen-hour shifts. You're right, people are gonna get tired and that's when mistakes do happen, that's that's just the nature of of being human. So what, I mean, can we get help from SUNY Cortland? Can we, you know, get help from the sheriff? So I'm just asking because it seems to me like you have two things going on, you have that long term, how do we keep the force of staff? In the short term, how do we give some relief to those people now because we're showing short staff to begin with? That's the part I'm not, I'm not really sure how we're gonna do that.
Here, here's what's been going on. On September eleventh, after the nine-eleven ceremony. I spent almost two hours with Senator Oberochre. Addressing these concerns and so forth. I've asked him to look for some grant money, similar to how we got Jesse Abbott's spot, the community-oriented policing. I said, I'd like about three, three hundred thousand for, you know, each year for three years to try to build this force up a little bit. The numbers were a little high, but that's what I asked for and he said he would definitely look and try to do it. And we've been in touch and 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 he's working on it. So I have done that avenue to try to bring money in to cover some of these spots. Also, as we start to phase out senior officers retiring and replace them with younger officers. We will see a savings that that will cover the cost of the additional officers for. As far as right now, I have an excellent working relationship with Sheriff Helms. There have been nights where we were gonna be short on the road, you know. When I say short, we have to maintain our staffing levels by contract. But we weren't able to put out extra patrols for the street and so forth when when collagen's coming back. I would let him know he would put additional people on. To help us, and I believe you and I have even talked about that, that there was one sitting at Burn Dairy one night and people couldn't understand what the sheriff was doing in town. They were here because of me. We also had troopers, I can pick up the phone and I can call command and and the state police and say, we're gonna be short, we're busy. You know, for three weeks in a row, we had gun calls. Very violent, high-profile cases and the the potential for retaliation was there. I called, I had two troopers in town, I had two deputies in town. There was four additional people in addition to what we had to help us. Like I said the other day, we were, we were, we were behind the eight ball. And two troopers came into town and were helping us and two deputies were in town handling our calls. So we have an excellent working relationship and we can get through that. What's, what's important is January through May, they're not high time off periods. Because the weather hasn't gotten nice, they're not holidays, it's not the summer and so forth. Where we, where we really bit the bullet was in June, July and August. When people want to take vacations and stuff, you know, and and the senior people are taking time off. So we ended up with a lot of junior people working, taking a brunt of what was going on. We're, we're busy compared to a lot of places and but if we can get that, like I said, if we can get. Four to six in that early academy, get them back here in May or June. You know, that helps us, even though we're not counting the the rookies right now. When I'm putting four people on the road and there's a rookie with them. That's an extra off, now we got a two-man car, even if they're in FTO, now that's a two-man car that can go handle a domestic. Instead of sending two cars, we send one, you know, we got a loud party going on somewhere, the two-man car goes, we we don't have the other ones going. So it does help. So, there there's a strategy going on here and it's like, let's get them fast so we can get them on the road faster. And then before the, before the summer crunch comes.
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you, chief.
Real, real quick, just so I'm making sure I'm tracking these numbers right. So if I understand correctly, you're currently budgeted to have twenty-seven officers, is that correct? And you want to increase it to thirty?
Right, normally there's, there's twenty-seven on the road. Nine per shift.
Okay, and what is your current, and with the vacancies you currently have, what is your on-road number?
We're down one on each shift, two on a couple shifts. One of our vacancies is Jesse Abbott, he didn't come off a shift, but he's still a vacancy. I mean, he's somebody that, like during the summer, we were relying on Jesse. We would pull him, like if we had a day shift that we needed somebody, we were pulling Jesse to sit the desk. Or or ride the road, so he was a resource we could utilize, so with him gone, it's that much harder. I I I also want to mention that our training officer that normally works, you know. Eight to four, Monday through Friday, Chad Hines is, has stepped up to the plate tremendously this summer. And he said, I know we're short, he says, put me on a shift. So we put him on a shift and he works overtime, so he's not only covering a shift, but he's helping fill the gaps. I could take ten of him and we and we'd be out of our problem. With Eric Perrine leaving, we had tried to get Chad back into his training role because we have fall training and stuff. So we've, we've, we've adjusted our training schedule, we've drastically reduced our fall firearms to like an hour. So we're only shooting our, our, our necessary required courses at the range, but we still have to go through CPR. Defensive tactics and some other things. The AED and and so forth and TASER training, which are all mandated, so we still have to get through those. But he said with Eric leaving, Eric is on the three-to-eleven shift, he said, put me back on, I'll I'll fill Eric's spot on that shift. So we are making it work. We are making it work and there have been times we've called Officer Rheingau out of the school to sit a desk. During the day when when we're really strapped to give somebody a breather, so we're making it work. I don't want to be back in this spot though in in another year, which is why I'm trying to get ahead of the curve. And we are working with, we have a cap meeting on Thursday, we're trying to get into central. Centralized arraignment process where we can take our prisoners to, that we have to hold. To the county sheriff's department. They will stay there and they will be helped and arraigned by a town justice. Or the judge Monday through Friday, Judge Burns arranges them in city court in the morning, in the afternoon. And then in the evening, a town justice would do it. Worked on this a couple of months ago, so what we could do is move our desk officer out onto the road and give us an extra person. Because we are not in the cap agreement. That fell, that fell apart and we have been working diligently to change that agreement, which there is a meeting on. Thursday to try to do that. So we could put a person who normally is sitting at the desk, doing some busy work. But he's primarily there so we, so we can watch anybody that we may have to detain overnight for arraignment. Which is typically warrants, we can't release orders of protection, which are domestics, mental health. Sometimes we have to hold on to them and get them to the hospital and so forth, but. So our numbers are reduced and Mark Helms, the sheriff and I have an agreement on how we make this work. So we are looking at innovative ways of putting manpower on the street. And and utilizing every man to the best ability that we can. The recruits are amazing.
Paul, would you, would you, would you guys do the transports or would the?
Paul, would you, would, would you guys do the transports or would the, I, uh, county transport them over there for the arraignment? How does that work?
What we would do is we would bring them in. This is not centralized booking, which is something we would love. Centralized booking, we would arrest somebody, they would go to the county, they would process them and hold on to them or release them. This is just for arraignment. We would still have to bring the person in and process them here, do the paperwork here. Then we would take them there to hold them, um, and then they would get arraigned. Um. Say it was a Sunday night through Thursday night. They would stay at the sheriff's department. He would transport them over Monday through Friday morning or the afternoon. If we get them during the day, we take them over, they bring them over in the afternoon. We're not transporting. Um, what we had to do this weekend, because we're not in cap. We took somebody over there that had to be held on a Friday, uh, Saturday night. We had to go get them. We had to go get them and bring them back here so city court judge could arraign them, which is a waste of our manpower. Um, you know, and there's times when the judge is ready for arraignment and we're busy and we can't do it. So keeping them there is essential because when they go to the cap over at the jail. Um. The justice goes to the, to the, to the jail and does the arraignment right there. There's no transporting. So we would give our city court judges the weekend off. Um, we wouldn't be transporting other than transporting them to the jail and leaving them for arraignment by the cap judge later on. Um, we are very confident that this is probably gonna happen. Um, but we've been taking them there on and off to, to make sure it works. The only caveat is that. There are three spots that the, the sheriff can hold right now. Um. We have agreed that if, say we had three people there, which is uncommon for us now between bail reform. Um, and and some of the other things, some of the changes we've made and not holding people any longer than we have to. Um, we seldom have three, but if we had taken up all the spots that the sheriff had and then he needed to put a person in there or. The sheriff, uh, the troopers or Homer PD did, we would go get our people and bring them back. Because we are the only ones that have a temporary holding facility. Although docs is not happy with our holding facility, uh, we do manage to get through with it. So if there became a crowding problem, we would take our people back. But for ninety five percent of the time, we could have an officer out on the road, hoping with these calls and ensuring that our. Community is safe and that our officers are safe.
Well, we gotta get to a point where I, I have talked to Brian about this before, that. IPD, I'll go to IPD down there when I'm working and you got the nine one one dispatchers are saying. They're, they're having the officers re- respond to the PD at IPD, come on in and take a complaint. Or the desk is empty, there's nobody sitting the desk, and then nine one one center is basically saying. Come on to IPD, you know, call an officer in from IPD to handle a complaint. I think that should be the way we're going. That would save manpower on the desk. I know you talked about that a little bit.
Right, right. We would go to like, we're one of the only PDs that has a full-time desk. IPD doesn't. Um, Homer PD doesn't, the sheriff department doesn't even, there's a call box outside if, you know, and the troopers. You know, you push a button, uh, somebody answers, um, you know, the mayor and I discussed this, we could put something out front. You know, until we could install an actual phone out there, we could put a sign to say, if you need police assistance, call nine one one. And they can call right over. Um, we do not do any dispatching anymore. If, if. Say Bill Carpenter calls me with a problem out in the street. I, you know, and I'm at my desk, I will call my front desk and say, this is the problem. This is where we need to go, get an officer there. They will pick up the phone, they will call nine one one. And tell them what I just told them and nine one one will dispatch because it's all on a rotation. Nine one one is tracking the rotation of officers and the, the, the availability of officers. So we do none of that. So to put a phone out front and have somebody call nine one one from there. Um, is the way everybody else is doing it. We're wasting manpower by sitting them on the dust.
I think that's where we have to go, the future.
I'm, I'm, uh, I'm thinking that if I'm, uh, uh, thinking of this correctly, you're reading this correctly, we have, we have. Money set aside in the rescue funds as well as, uh, Paul's budget for, for vehicles. So why don't we just shift, uh, uh, the one in the budget, uh, towards personnel? And set that money aside for them.
My cars in the, in the budget have been removed because of the rescue money. At least that's what my budget's showing now, is that has been modified. I think all equipment out of department budgets was removed. And put into the rescue money.
That is correct.
So, so I, I hear what you're saying, Tom, you, you think it's like a double dip and, and it's not.
Okay. I tried.
Well, I appreciate it. Um, you know, and, and like I said, you know, i- i- it's an ask. You know, I, I'm at a point where I think it's a need. Um, I am seriously, I've been here thirty six years. I have never seen us experiencing this type of staffing issues. And we're at a volatile period because it's everywhere. It's not Cortland PD that people don't like. They, they're people that don't want to be police anymore. They don't want to be police. And there are other communities that are short, that pay more money, that do less work than us. I mean, y- you know, you see the housing market out there, people are selling their houses for. You know, tens of thousands of dollars more than they're worth, you know, right now, you know. With, with other agencies short, you know, we're battling to keep people here. And, um, you know, it, it's, it's not gonna take long. If they don't, here's how I put it to my people, the cavalry is coming. I am fighting for the cavalry to come help us. And that will be these three people. That'll be putting people into academies, um, consecutively getting them back. Um, so we don't end, end, end up in this crunch. It's, it's scheduling changes. Um, it's contract negotiations. I mean, there's a number of things that if we, they all fall into place. Um, we will keep people and we may actually, um, get people that want to come here. Uh, so, um, there is a plan in place and, and I'm just trying to get all the pieces to go together. And, um, but I am truly, truly scared of what the future will hold if we don't try to. Get ahead of this, get a step ahead of it. Ithaca has gotten a lot more busy and a lot more violent over the years. We all know what Syracuse is, um, and they border us. Those people are here. They are here on a weekly basis. And, um, you know, we've got to protect our citizens and we've got to protect our offices and, um. I'm just trying to do that.
Yeah, Syracuse is down two hundred something officers.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, as far as, everything goes in cycles. Unfortunately, police departments across the country are, we're now in a down, down cycle to where. People just don't want to think about law enforcement as a career. Um, that will change. Now, will it change tomorrow? No. Um, do I have a crystal ball when it will change? No. But the time will come that all of a sudden you do have, and Bruce references TC three. Well, you'll have a lot more people looking to go for law to TC three and then transferring to Cortland State or somewhere else to finish getting their degree. And instead of having just eleven handed to you, you know, by civil service, you'll be getting back into the list of. You know, eighty, ninety, a hundred on that list. Doesn't help though now, unfortunately. I think we understand your situation, chief, and we're gonna have to talk more about it. Um. Unfortunately, as I say, things, you know, I don't know if everybody else on councils look, but again. One way this budget is balanced is by us transferring in one point seven million from wastewater and. And, you know, water fund. So that's again, that's one point seven million that we transferred in to balance the budget, which legally we can do it. Um, but without that money. We'd be looking at a seventeen percent increase, eighteen percent tax increase, so. They, right, fortunately puts things into perspective.
In my existing twenty twenty one budget, you'll notice that twenty twenty two is like two hundred and some thousand dollar reduction. In, in, in the police department budget. Part of that's the vehicles. Part of it's staffing. Um, I have an amazing senior accounts clerk. Who did some research for me. By going to one civilian.
Yeah.
Covered by SEIU. We're saving fifty three thousand dollars. It's in the twenty twenty one budget to cover two civilians and their benefits under the PBA. To one civilian under the SEIU, that's a fifty three thousand one hundred and seventy eight dollars savings for that move. That's in the budget right now. For twenty twenty one. Also, when we look at the five senior offers, five senior officers we lost.
Yeah.
And then look at five junior officers, that's a hundred and seventeen, almost a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Savings that's in the twenty twenty one numbers. So the hundred and sixty some thousand dollars is in the twenty twenty one budget. It's just because when we're going from higher end paid patrols to cheaper ones. To less, to, to lower paid ones, uh, money's there.
Now, as I said, that's, you know, tonight, tonight at the Listening Summit, you could say. This is all something that we're gonna have to take into account and talk among, talk among ourselves. Um.
Yeah, let's, let's see how the budget shakes out and, uh. See where we fall at the end of the, the budget session.
That's all I can do is ask and, and I do know that, you know, I've had conversations with business people, business people that have put. You know, a ton of money into the Cortland community and they're seeing the effects of not having enough. Police on the street. A patrol officer on this, uh, walking the beat, nonexistent. We can't do it. Uh, we don't have the staffing and, you know, the call activity is too high, so downtown is changing. You know, people are talking about it, you know, um, we're trying to revitalize downtown, you know. Putting a beat person out there would be an amazing enhancement. Uh, you know, I, I don't envy you, you have a tough job to do. Um, you know, we all do. But, um, I'm pleading my case, uh, you know, you, you, you appointed me to. Police this city and I'm trying to do the best I can, but I need bodies to do it. And in addition, when we look at the cost, I mean, if we're spending a hundred and thirty two thousand on a hundred and fifty thousand on. Short shift overtime. You're coming up with, you gotta come up with that money to pay the people that work sixteen hours. I'd rather have that money go towards three new bodies, so I'm not having people work sixteen hours. I, I, I told you all about some, some gun cases we had, could have gone horribly wrong. And now what it takes is somebody being tired and making the wrong decision or not reacting properly.
Yep.
Alright, any further questions for the chief? So we're gonna move on to Bruce Adams with wastewater.
Thanks.
Something that jumped up and we may not have ween joining us, so Bruce.
Uh, good evening. Um. The, uh, I don't know if you have the most recent, uh, copy of the budget. Uh, like Paul, I had noticed some, uh, simple transcription errors, uh, within an hour of reporting to Mac. They were all corrected, so I, I do have. A correct budget in front of me, um, as noted in the cover letter and by the way. You know, when, when, when the mayor first suggested writing a cover letter, I thought, yeah, really? But, uh, I really think it's a good move, you know, I like. That it really forces me as a department head to put in succinct terms. What we're looking to do with the following year's budget and I, I hope all of you had a, uh, an opportunity to go over that one. Uh, so, uh, as I've mentioned now a couple of times, uh, we are seeing increases. In, uh, chemical costs and, you know, we are a process that uses a lot of chemicals as part of our treatment. Uh, and I went over that in some detail. Uh, I'm hoping that we won't have, uh, ruinous increases because. We simply have to purchase those chemicals, otherwise we're not going to meet our discharge permit. So if we do see very large increases on the order of eight, nine, ten percent or more. Uh, that will mean we'll have to curtail some other things that we had hoped to do. Uh, hopefully it won't come to that, uh, as you, uh, know. Uh, we also saw our, uh, natural gas supply, uh, for the next twelve months. Go up sharply due to the volatility of the market and the bad timing of when our existing contract went over. Again, hopefully that market will stabilize by the time, uh, next October rolls around and we'll get back to something more reasonable. The sludge and leachate, uh, by a request of, uh, I believe the comptroller's office. We've split that up. I had been budgeting that as a net net, uh, now instead. Uh, we're budgeting the revenue, excuse me, uh, from leachate treatment as a revenue. Uh, by itself and the tipping fees as an expense by itself and I've put those. Each at exactly four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it's. Very weather dependent, how that net net works out, uh, not on our side, but on the leachate, this has been a wet year. Uh, so I'm expecting to come out a little bit ahead, uh, although, uh, the county did raise their tipping fee six and a quarter percent. This year, um, we haven't, we haven't done any, uh, increase in turn. Uh, that may be something that we want to look at, uh, at, at a future point during next year. Um. Labor is contractual. Um, I've mentioned this a couple of times already, but, uh. Uh, you know, we're doing a lot of extra things now that we hadn't done before, uh, and. We've had a staff of ten and that's inclusive, including myself and our administrative, uh, person. Uh, so we do need to, and I'm not looking forward for twenty two, but we do need to have the conversation about. Uh, getting our staff up to eleven or twelve so that we can, uh, properly manage, uh, the new processes and all of the new equipment that we have. Any questions? I mean, it's, it's really a pretty incremental budget. It's not, there's not a whole lot of difference. Uh, from this budget to the last couple of, um, I would point out and I only found this out myself as I was looking. Cause I've been telling people that, you know, the, the fact that we're generating our, our own electricity is not so much a cost saver. As it is a greenhouse gas reduction opportunity, uh, as well as a, uh, you know, a job builder. Uh, because it's a good economic development tool, it's what, it's a big part of what got, uh, burned dairy here. Uh, but I compared twenty twenties total electric bill. Uh, delivery and supply against that from ten years ago, twenty ten. In twenty ten, delivery and supply together came to over three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Last year, thirty nine thousand dollars. So. It, it definitely is a cost saver, even though we're spending a hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, on a maintenance contract for the generator. Uh, we're still considerably ahead on that in addition to the other benefits. Any questions from the council? Yes, Tom?
Is there, is there any way that we can either, uh, uh, produce more methane or store more methane? So it could be utilized, uh, more as a supplement?
Um, we do tend to run the generator, uh, in, you know, it's a five hundred KW generator. So maxed out, it produces five hundred KW. Our plant typically uses between. Uh, three hundred and twenty five, three hundred and fifty KW. Uh, so we do have generation capacity in excess of our needs, which is why we're able to export. Um, we do typically, as long as we're getting, uh, uh, our dairy waste in, uh, at a good clip. Uh, we will run it at four hundred to four hundred and fifty, uh, often four seventy five. Um. We can't really do much more than that, uh, one because DEC has limited us to thirty thousand gallons of dairy waste a day. Uh, they feel and not without reason that that is the. Uh, they feel and not without reason that that is the reasonable capacity of our digesters. Um, plus, any, any. Biogas that we generate. Above what the generator can use. Uh, is of no benefit to us, in fact, it costs us because we do have an increased solids. Uh, disposal expense associated with the dairy waste, you know, uh, prior to accepting dairy waste. We, uh, very consistently did twenty-five hundred wet tons of sludge a year, uh, we are now over five thousand wet tons of sludge. Uh, so that is a considerable, uh, disposal expense, and if it is not benefiting us. By generate electricity, uh, then it's of no use to us now, you know, I've, I've had the conversation before about potentially. Uh, doing a, uh. A renewable compressed natural gas type apparatus that we could use to power some city vehicles. Uh, that would be a considerable investment in that equipment alone, let alone what it would take to get our. Uh, digestion facilities up to be able to handle, you know, significantly in excess of thirty thousand gallons per day of dairy waste. So, I mean, it's a great thought and, and I really hope someday we can get there. Uh, but that will, I think, require additional state funding. And, uh, we already have our eyes on, uh, state funding, hopefully for that, uh, aeration system upgrade.
Uh, there must be, uh, there must be some monies out there, uh, for, uh. Uh, these types of vehicles regarding grant applications. For municipalities.
Uh, I would think so, uh, but I've not seen anything and. Uh, maybe it is worth, uh, pursuing, uh, so I'll make a note to see. If anybody that I know in the industry is familiar with, uh, applicable state programs, but. I've not seen anything that takes this as a holistic, uh, food waste, anaerobic digestion, uh. You know, RCNG. Uh, municipal vehicle thing, you know, that's, that's very forward thinking, uh, but it's also very specific kind of vertical integration, uh, thing. It's worth pursuing, but I've not seen anything in that regard.
No, I think, uh, you, you're absolutely right, I think, uh, while we're, I consider us ourselves a, a, a small municipality. Uh, with, uh, much larger ones that would probably have, uh, would benefit more. Uh, from something like this, but I gotta believe there's, there's something out there now, they're, they've. Giving incentives now for, uh, electric vehicle purchases, so. Yeah, if you can reach out, uh, that'd be, uh, that'd be great, uh, I'd be curious to see how you make out.
Will do. And here's the proof that it's boring, no questions.
Bruce, I'd like you to catch counsel up on, um, two things, one. Uh, plant upgrades, more of a reminder of how much. Has been done by you and your people over the last couple of years. And then after that, I want to talk about vermicomposting, some of the other things that we've been trying to make headway on. Just to make sure everybody's caught up to speed.
Um. Well, more than the last couple of years, but, uh, we have. Uh, upgraded our aeration blowers, we went from, uh. Multi-stage centrifugal blowers to high-speed, uh, turbo blowers, uh, with a, uh. And that brought a fifty percent reduction in kilowatt-hours, uh, per pound of, uh, BOD reduced. We upgraded our. Uh, influence. Bar screen, uh, that is a piece of equipment that, uh, catches things that don't really belong in the sewer. Uh, and helps to, uh, prolong the life of downstream equipment. Uh, we replaced one that had been installed in the mid-seventies, uh, with a, um, very modern design, very low maintenance design. Uh, the old one was, uh, quite maintenance intensive, the new one, wonderful. Uh, we put in sludge thickening, which is, we have not had proper sludge thickening. Uh, since I've been working there, um, so we finally got that, that helps to increase the. Uh, efficiency of the anaerobic digestion by removing a significant portion of the water. Uh, so it, it helps to lengthen the time that sludge stays in the anaerobic digestors. Uh, increasing volatile solids breakdown and, uh, bio solids, biogas production. Uh, we switched from gas chlorine disinfection, uh, you know, we have for decades. Uh, been getting chlorine gas in ton containers. You know, which also happened to put us on the EPA's, uh, risk management plan. Uh, as a potential source of a mass casualty incident. Um, so we moved away from that, uh, and we now produce our own, uh, weak bleach from salt. So that's, that's very cool, and in fact, we were able to supply this solution. Uh, to other departments during last year's pandemic for use in, uh, uh, surface disinfection, uh, so that was good. Um, we have. Put up a, an entirely new digester equal in capacity to our. Uh, legacy digesters, uh, complex altogether, uh, that has allowed us to, uh, bring in all of this dairy waste. We converted a, an unused and unusable sludge thickening tank to a dairy, uh, receiving vessel. And, uh, so we're able to take the dairy waste into that one, it has capacity for heating and mixing. Uh, initially, pH adjustment, the dairy waste comes in at a very low pH and, uh, is aggressively corrosive to equipment. Uh, we had initially been dealing with that, uh, using caustic soda, that was very expensive. Uh, and we came upon a concept to use, uh, digested sludge. Uh, circulating that back into the way receiving, uh, vessel and that's basically free for the cost of pumping, that's worked out very well. Uh, we put in a, uh, biogas cleaning system, uh, that removes hydrogen sulfide. Uh, moisture and saloxanes and, uh, it does so, the, the hydrogen sulfide is primarily done. Uh, biologically and that saves on the cost of media, which is a more typical, uh, way of doing it. Um, you, you want to remove hydrogen sulfide because, uh, it forms hydro, uh, hydrochloric acid. In combustion engines and will heat your engines up pretty quick. Uh, and the fact that it's by, yeah, Tom knows, and the fact that it's biological, that we're not forever buying media. Uh, as it's used up by, uh, absorbing hydrogen sulfide, salaxane is a class of chemicals. Uh, found in personal care products like shampoo and such, it, it gives luster to the hair. Uh, it also, however, turns into a glass-like substance and combustion engines also not good. Uh, so, uh, the fact that we have a manufacturer of personal care products in town means that slots and removal is very important. Um, and of course, we put in the, uh, the generator, uh, which, uh, I have reported on several occasions, is doing fabulously well. Uh, producing lots of electricity, reducing, uh, our greenhouse gas, uh, footprint significantly. Uh, a twenty thirteen, I think, greenhouse gas survey found that the wastewater facility by itself was seventy-five percent of city government electrical use. And we have, we have cut our electrical use by ninety percent. Uh, so that is a, uh, a very significant cut, and finally, uh, we put in a, uh, sequencing batch reactor. Process in order to address Chesapeake Bay nutrient removal requirements, uh, biological nutrients are largely. Uh, phosphorus and nitrogen and, uh, they are not typically addressed in a conventional wastewater treatment system. Uh, rather phosphorus is largely untreated and, uh, nitrogen comes from the ammonia in urine. Uh, we had been running a process that converts biologically the ammonia to, uh, nitrates and then nitrates, uh, with no further. Uh, treatment, uh, the sequencing batch reactor process utilizes a, uh, series of. High oxygen, low oxygen cycles, uh, to biologically take the nitrate and. And convert it to nitrogen gas, which just goes off harmless in the atmosphere, phosphorus is removed by, uh, chemical precipitation. Uh, we have not to date been able to make the BNR process work reliably more than two or three weeks. And, uh, we have identified our current aeration system as a bottleneck there, uh, which is why we applied for a DEC. Engineering planning grant to come up with design work for upgrading our aeration system. Uh, what I am envisioning is a fourth, we currently have three of fourth blower, so that we can dedicate a single blower to each. Basin pair and each pair acts as a reactor and, and is on its own cycle. Uh, and it, we'll have to, uh, rework the air distribution piping. Uh, and we want to, uh, replace the, uh, air diffuser grids, which are now twenty-five years old and overdue for replacement. And I've lost John.
Did everybody write that all down? So. Um. I guess kind of a follow-up question in terms of capital needs, um. Now, in terms of a capital budget, what's on your list, your big items still to go?
Oh heavens, yes, I did not print out a copy of that for myself and I don't remember a lot now. The, the, actually, the very first thing that was on my five-year plan was replacing the, uh, uh, vector equipment in the. Uh, final clarifiers and, uh, circumstances forced our hand on that, which is why we had to do that as an emergency project this summer. Um, but other things are, we need to replace the motor control center in our watering building. Uh, decades of hydrogen gas, uh, coming off of our sludge de-watering process has, uh, simply. Uh, really eaten up the wires in that motor control center, uh, so we want to, uh. Recreate it in a room above the current motor control center, uh, and it'll have its own, uh, external fresh air supply. Uh, that is the last we priced it about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I expect that it'll be more by the time we get to it. This didn't even really make it to our list, but our paving around the plant is in very tough shape. Uh, I plan to, uh, and I've had, I've had Nick look at it a couple of times. Uh, but I need to get him out to take a look at it and give me an assessment again. Uh, it is simply, uh, getting, uh, very beat up by the truck traffic we now have. Uh, you know, we have, uh, leachate trucks coming in and, uh, dairy product delivery trucks. Uh, as well as trucks for delivering our chemical supplies. Uh, so our, our paving wasn't really, uh, constructed with that type of traffic in mind and it is showing it. We're working on lighting. We've done half of that project, uh, just recently completed it, uh, we have another half to do. In two thousand twelve, we did a, uh, a plant-wide lighting retrofit, uh. But that was before LED really came into its own, uh, we should probably look at it again, uh, with LED. Uh, which tends to pay for itself relatively quickly, both in energy savings. And in our case, it means, you know, that we get more, uh, energy exported onto the grid and paid for, uh, and, uh. Reduction in maintenance because LED lighting, uh, just requires, uh. You know, so little, uh, replacement as opposed to, uh, incandescent or even fluorescent. I have a whole list I don't have in front of me, uh, I can't recall whether I had previously sent it out to council, if not, I can certainly send it out.
Oh, I think it would be. Yeah. Yeah, it'd be instructive if you can share with council, um. Now, the point, I think here is that there's been several million dollars that have already been invested in plants. Um, we, we've managed to keep sewer rates from increasing, we've improved efficiencies, we've taken major steps forward. We've been an economic driver because as Bruce mentioned, burned dairy would not be there without a place to dispose of their waste. And the city wastewater treatment plant is that place. And, uh, you know, Bruce, you mentioned there, the LEDs relate, yeah, I've heard that's a pretty good thing. And the council knows.
That, uh, you know, we were able to, uh, issue a. Significant industrial user discharge permit to Marietta after a number, I think they were without a discharge permit for seven years. Uh, we were not only able to issue them a discharge permit, uh, at some expense to ourselves. Uh, but we also entered into a public-private, uh, partnership with them in operating their pre-treatment system. Uh, they have since taken over its operation themselves, but, uh, Marietta, uh, which was bought by. Kick Products and then, and they're currently owned by Voyant Beauty, uh, you know, they have. Remained committed to the Cortland facilities and they have, uh, grown considerably in the intervening time. Uh, last year, I think there were over, uh, four hundred employees at the central app location alone.
Yeah, truly amazing.
Yeah, they also participated in the pumpkin chunking, uh. Utilizing their engineers there, so, uh. They have a well-rounded staff there.
Indeed, indeed, no, I've, uh, I've always had a good experience, uh, working with, uh, uh, now Voyant.
Yep.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Adams?
I don't think I mentioned, although I did point it out in the cover letter, uh, that next year's budget envisions a six percent rate increase, which. Uh, for the thirty-eight percent of people who, uh. Get, uh, minimum charges is eight dollars for the year.
As I recall, that, that was for, for two years too, that was.
Right, we had no increase last year, correct?
Yeah. I thought you did a heck of a job, Bruce.
Well, thank you, Bruce.
Well, he still is Bruce, Bruce and Bruce.
I gotta tell you, it, it, it is very weird not being the only Bruce in the conversation. Not something I'm accustomed to.
Well, I, I got, was given credit for things you, you have done and I did do the right thing and say it's the other Bruce that did that, if not me, so I. I did give credit where it was due there, Mr. Adams.
Well, I appreciate that.
Outstanding, any other questions? Very good, thank you, Bruce.
Well, thank you very much and good night.
Thanks, Bruce. Good night, Bruce.
There's a Monty Python skit. I am looking. And our fire chief needed to go, so we're going to have to. Check in my participant list, uh, we're gonna have to. Put the discussion with regard to the fire department off either to the next meeting or a special meeting. Uh, my recommendation is that we, uh, just push it to the November third meeting. And take it from there.
So, so Mayor, I was, I, I was called away to, uh, some issues over there in the third ward earlier, so I missed, I missed the earlier part, that you covered. All the rest of, uh. You know, the finance department and the, 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 uh, technology department and such, was all that, is all that already been covered?
Bruce, no, we hadn't, no, we, you came right in, right in the beginning with the police.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, I think it makes sense to push some of the discussions to November third, uh, meeting fire. Uh, it is after eight o'clock. It might be good for us to just wrap up if there's anything else council would like to discuss before we adjourn.
It's early tonight. I, I'm good for another two hours.
Sleep in.
I, I can, I can wait and, and bring up my concerns later, man, that's fine, we can do it later, we can do it another day.
Yeah, well, you know, Tom, Tom, your point is well-taken, we have had several meetings that have lasted longer. And we've allowed for open discussion and debate, we've given the opportunity to put everything on the floor. Uh, I think that's important. I think that's important. I think the council having the opportunity to ask questions and allow for. Dialogue is a big part of what we've done and continue to do. So the next budget workshop is not until November third. And between now and then. There are questions where department heads are available, just send an email. And my recommendation, as always, is if you can give them the questions beforehand, it's a little bit easier for them to show up. Prepared to answer the questions, whereas if you ask some questions that will require a little bit of legwork or research at the workshop. Kind of like what I did with Bruce Adams there, put him on the spot with regard to capital projects, but. Give, give them the questions beforehand and it makes it easier to have the answers at the tip of their fingers, so to speak, next Wednesday. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss before we adjourn for the evening? No formal openings, there's no formal closing.
Okay, so if I didn't miss anything, then I'll just bring up about my my concerns the next time. If I came in with the police, if that's where you guys. If you didn't do anything before that, then okay, I won't bounce back to anything else, but I did have some questions, but I can wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll I'll put out an email to council on some thoughts I have on the our budget, common council and mayor's budget. I will very quickly say. The mayor's put in for pay raise for everybody on council and trust me, I'm not against the pay raise for council members. Kind of wish it was a few years back, but. That's my only concern is.
Should have brought it up sooner, John.
My only concern about voting on a pay raise for council members. By the time we or council would do that and if it passes, the election would be over. So it does not look good if council members vote for pay raids for next year after the election. That's just something you have to take into account. I'm all for pay raises and I think for years councils not been paid. I mean, again, Tom knows. When I started ten years ago, we were paid thirty-five hundred dollars a year. And it's been five thousand for just five years, maybe four years, Tom?
Maybe four.
So yes, it did, that should be bumped up, but the optics do not look good. Giving a pay raise and. Yeah, I'm gonna ding our public here. But again, I can ding them because I'm leaving. We've had many council meetings years back even that. The courthouse courtroom would be packed with people because we were having a discussion about maybe making, making cat owners get a license for their cats. But yet nobody ever came about the budget. But we all know that by the same token, you start talking about a pay raise for elected officials. And it's given after an election, people go crazy. So. I'm not saying right or wrong. I have no skin in the game. I'm gonna be gone. But that's just my opinion. It's. You might want to look at it and say, maybe next year. It's not an election year next year. At least for.
Well, that's the thing. That's the thing. You can't change salaries in the middle of the term. It has to be done when there's a change in the term. And you know, if we need to do a deeper dive. We can look at other places, but if you look at what county legislators make and if you look at what, for example, the town of Cortlinville. Board and the supervisor make.
I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah.
No, I know. And again, too.
My point is, my point is that if we don't do it now, when will it potentially happen? And it is public service, but. To continue to attract quality people for the position.
We should have made this. This one thing known much sooner because. That part of the budget was done months ago. Okay? And I'm just as much as blame. I I could have said something at a at a meeting. I don't disagree, you know, as far as what other. You know, whatever Corlinville makes, whatever the county legislators make, I'm just saying. That it's bad optics and that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, well, I I am not in favor of raising the mayor's salary. I didn't get a chance to, you know, if you guys had that discussion before I got there and we can discuss the next time, but. I'm definitely not in favor of that. So I'll leave it at that. We can talk about it more in the next meeting.
Yeah. I'll send out an email and just my thoughts and and then. When's the next meeting? Count a budget meeting next week?
Next Wednesday, November third.
November third.
Damn, I love, I love retirement. You never know what day it is.
I'm starting to feel that too, John.
All I know is I'm sitting in my camp with about a foot of water on my grounds out there.
The the one bit of information that will be useful, I believe, heading into. Next Wednesday, want to make sure that everybody did get the email and discussion about negotiations. With the recreation contract between the city and the town of Cortlinville. And as I've related to council and more than happy to do the same publicly. The city's had a strong relationship with the town and up until two thousand and seventeen. Town was paying the city eighty-six thousand dollars a year in terms of the youth bureau and in return, the youth bureau would advertise in terms of. Town recreational resources, the management of Testa Park and other things such as. We've got somebody that we hire after hours that would lock up bathrooms, et cetera, at parks. Two thousand and eighteen, that number dropped from eighty-six thousand to seventy-one thousand and it was a hard change. It was a fifteen thousand dollar drop. When we had already finalized our budget and through John McNerney's hard work, we were able to. Make it go and get to the end of the year and we've been in the seventies with the town since. Up until this current year, where this current year, the town proposed cutting the city's. Payment to thirty-eight thousand and after some, what I will describe as protracted. And involved discussions between the town supervisor, myself, we were able to get back up into the sixty thousands. Now, bear in mind, everybody knows last year there was a decrease in terms of what was being done. We shut down a number of programs. And the rationale was the safety issue. We also furloughed the majority of the youth bureau employees because. In addition to the reduction in work, we expected and anticipated significant financial issues, financial stress. However, there were some things that continue. And one of the big things that has come up in the last couple of years is Gutsis Park. John McNerney is the youth bureau director and as a member of the regional sports council has been absolutely instrumental. In terms of advocating for and helping move that project along. When it opened, John and his staff, the youth bureau staff have been quite engaged and they've been engaged, not just. At Gutsis, but also with the other town projects such as Testa Park. And last year, when things were starting to open up, Gutsis did open strong and that created a fair amount of work for John, who. Was basically a one-man show for a while. So this year, in terms of negotiations for next year, I've reached out to the town supervisor way back a couple of months ago. And then, gosh, it was three or four weeks ago, heard back that the offer from the town is forty thousand dollars for the first half of the year. And then figure out who's doing what. I immediately responded back that we we can't do that. You know, we asked for eighty thousand dollars, a five-year contract that increases by two percent each year, not even getting back to where we were at the eighty-six thousand. But the thought was, we need that financial stability for our youth bureau to be able to function and for us to know that this is a. Partnership that both sides are vested in. Unfortunately, I've not heard back and we will discuss next week, but my recommendation to council is going to be that we terminate. The agreement with the town. We concern ourselves with the city facilities as we have. And allow John and his staff to focus on. City facilities and city programs. And in turn, city residents. We can make up revenue by charging for non-residents in terms of the pool, game and beach. And in particular, our programs for adults, things like our softball leagues, the adult volleyball league that do draw. A wide range of residents, not just city residents. And these are programs that, quite frankly, probably can afford it better than some of the programs like the youth center. It's not been an easy. Topic to discuss or to come to this conclusion. But as we all know, in the comptroller's audit, John McNerney has a lot of hours. Lot of hours that he's been keeping track of and he's not in a position where he could just take time off. So the last couple of years, he has worked very hard and very, very diligently for the children throughout our community. And this would be an opportunity if we go in this direction, if we're not going to be compensated. For the work that he and his staff are doing, well, it'll reduce the workload and give us the opportunity to just focus on city programs. And provide high-quality programs for city residents. So we can. Further, further the discussion next Wednesday, but at this point, for us to. Sign on to an agreement, it's less than half of what the true value of the work that our staff does. It's not the right decision on a number of left levels, in particular fiscally. And I told you before, I wouldn't do this if I was returning as mayor to say, yeah, well, we'll figure out the budget halfway through the year. And I'm not going to do that to somebody else in terms of their first year as mayor. You know, when we do a budget, we do a budget for a year. I think everybody budgets for a year. We we can't budget for this for six months and say, we'll figure it out.
You get right, Mayor. You know, we have to have a budget for the year, so. I look forward to this discussion.
Very good. There was no motion to open the meeting. Do not require a motion to adjourn, so I'll simply say, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. The updates that I have received as the meeting has progressed. Yes, there were some hotspots and certainly there's going to be some basements with groundwater flooding. But as I, as I stated at the front end of the meeting, we've chosen to invest in things that would directly benefit people in our community. Now, we haven't necessarily gussied up every building or righted every sign. But we have taken care of the critical infrastructure, so we've had our priorities in order. And by dealing with the potential flooding sites, you know, we're not able to offset every potential problem. But we are much farther along than where we were ten years ago and I appreciate the fact that we've had a vision and we've all worked together to get there. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.